If those of you in here are joining with us, could join us in a tradition we start out every meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and the Lord's Prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Our fathers were in heaven, how did they know that in the end we're all here today?
To board members, are there any amendments to tonight's agenda? Dr. Shaffer?
I have no amendments requested this evening, thank you.
Tonight is an exciting evening because there is for some sense of normalcy, at least we're talking about graduates in the dismay, and we should be talking about graduates in May. So I'm going to turn over this part of the ceremonies this evening to Dr. Shaffer's. We recognize some very distinguished graduates of ours.
We are pleased and proud tonight to welcome eight of our graduating seniors, all of whom are headed into military services. And we're going to have a really short graduation ceremony for them because they have to report early for basic training. So we're going to bring them up one at a time. Dr. Thomas and Mrs. Harvey will be calling their names. We will confer the diploma to them, have them turn their tassels. They'll have an opportunity to get a picture taken in the hallway with their parents. So we're going to start about the program right now.
Logan Paul Poe, joining the Army.
Logan, normally I would shake your hand, but I'm going to for a present from the position. I want to award you your diploma and let you know that on behalf of the Board of School Trustees in the State of Indiana, I announce you as a graduate of Danville Community High School. Congratulations to you. I don't know if any of our board members have any comments or any congratulating comments. It's totally up to you.
This real fast, Logan. On behalf of the school board, just wanted to say thank you. Congratulations first of all for your graduation. And this is not, I know how you expected it tonight to be. But we also want to give you a sincere, our sincere appreciation and thankfulness for your decision to serve our country and join hundreds of thousands of other, the best that keeps our freedoms and keeps our families and communities safe. We appreciate your selfless willingness to do so. So thank you so much.
Congratulations. I ask you to turn your tassel. Can you, may proceed now? Willing or less.
For all of you who are here, for anyone watching, the graduates will then go out into the hallway where they'll take family photos. They'll get photographs with their capping gown and some sort of a normal photograph.
Nathan Allen Bowling. Nathan is joining the Army.
On behalf, on behalf of the school board trustees, State of Indiana, I proclaim you to be a graduate of Danville Community High School.
Nathan, again, on behalf of the school board, we'd like to thank you for your will of yourselfless willingness to participate as a member of the Armed Forces, in particular, the Army. We congratulate you on your graduation and thank you so much for your willingness to serve.
Congratulations.
Quentin P. Chubak is joining the Army National Guard. There you go.
Great congratulations. On behalf of the Board of School Trustees in the State of Indiana, I announce that you are a graduate of Danville Community High School 2020. And I know, Mr. Stewart, if I have a few comments, on behalf of the board.
Quentin, on behalf of the school board, we just want to congratulate you on your graduation. I know this isn't the ceremony you expected, you and your family, but we're glad you could join us tonight. Want to thank you for your selfless decision to serve our military and we just wish you all the best.
Thank you very much.
We have Garrett Cole Deedon, and Garrett is joining the Army National Guard.
On behalf of the Board of Trustees, by the power vested in me by the State of Indiana, I proclaim that you are a 2020 graduate of Danville Community High School. Congratulations.
Garrett, on behalf of the school board, we want to just thank you, congratulate you on your graduation first of all. And I know this is an odd night for you. You're expecting to be in the gym and walking across the stand of the platform like everyone else. But we want to sincerely thank you for your selfless decision to serve our country, the Army National Guard. We just wish you the very best of luck.
Thank you.
Gabriel Louis Farnsley is joining the Army.
On behalf of the Board of School Trustees and by the power vested in me by the State of Indiana, I proclaim that you are a 2020 graduate of Danville Community High School. I know, Mr. Stewart, our board president, I have a few words for you as well.
Gabriel, first of all, congratulations to you and your family on your graduation from high school. I know tonight wasn't what you expected, but we wanted to recognize you this evening and wanted to sincerely thank you for your selfless decision to serve in our Armed Forces. And we wish you the very best of luck.
Have you turned your tassel?
Also, by my Dr. Shaffer, Sir Farnsley's are longtime family friends. Believe it or not, I saw, Gabe, I'm sorry I'm going to do this to you, but I watched Gabe learn how to ride a bicycle without training wheels. So I've been lucky to watch him grow up. He's a great young man. And thank you for serving our country as you go forward here. I'm awfully proud of you, bud.
Next, we have Richard Kolinowski, and Richard is joining the Army.
Congratulations. On behalf of Board of Trustees and by the power vested in me by the State of Indiana, I proclaim that you are a 2020 graduate of Danville Community High School. We congratulate you. Mr. Stewart, our board president, a few words for you as well.
Richard, on behalf of the school board, first of all, congratulations on your graduation. I know tonight wasn't kind of like you probably expected, but we wanted to for sure bring you and recognize you and make sure you received your diploma. We want to sincerely thank you for your selfless decision to join the Army and we wish you the very best of luck in your future.
Turn your tassel. You can't congratulate people.
Claire Marie Petrie is joining the Army National Guard.
Claire, I'm standing right here. Congratulations to you. By the power vested in me by the Board of Trustees and by the State of Indiana, I proclaim that you are a 2020 graduate of Danville Community High School. Mr. Stewart, stay right here. Mr. Stewart, our board president, I have a few words to share.
Hi Claire, on behalf of the school board, I wanted first of all, congratulate you on your graduation. And I know this wasn't what you probably had thought about over the last year getting ready for tonight, but we wanted to bring you and recognize you, especially your special recognition for your selfless decision to serve in the Army National Guard. We really appreciate your dedication to our country and we wish you the very best in all of you.
Claire, have you turned your tassel?
And last but not least, we have Austin Lee Andrew Pierce, and Austin is joining the Army.
Austin, by the power vested in me by the Board of School Trustees in the State of Indiana, I proclaim you a 2020 graduate of Danville Community High School. Mr. Stewart, our board president, I have a few words you'd like to share with me as well.
Austin, on behalf of the school board, I just want to congratulate you on your graduation. I know tonight is not maybe what you expected, but we wanted to have a special evening to recognize you and the service that you're getting ready to start. I want to sincerely thank you for your selfless decision to enter the Army and we wish you the very best of luck in all of you.
You may turn your tassel.
A ceremony like that goes fast and you could speak with these graduates for hours. And what they're doing is something that I know we all admire and respect very greatly. And this is the very least we can do and hopefully these small photos that are taken after this meeting tonight are those things that they can hold on to for the rest of their lives. And I know that there are lots of wonderful things ahead of these young men and women, so thank you to all of them and their work here at Danville. Wanting to move on to the next item on the agenda as we move forward, our approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve last month's minutes? So Cory Mason, do we have a second? Mr. McRoberts, any discussion or questions?
Mr. President, one thing I noticed with the minutes that I would recommend that we might look at amending. Due to our current situation with the COVID-19, I think it would be prudent that we memorialize that these last few meetings have been a little different in our setup. And while it says there was 22 guests in attendance, while that might be true technically, I don't think there was 22 guests physically in attendance with the setup that we had. I think we might want to notate that in minutes for memorialization that we did make accommodations under the circumstances to try our best to have interaction.
Very, very, very well, I fully agree. What we'd like to do possibly amend the amendments to recognize that we were virtually meeting and those numbers included our virtual efforts. So if we could have an amendment of that, we have a motion to pass the minutes with amendment to come that recognizes the virtual nature of last month's meeting. Want to try that again, Mr. Mason?
Yeah.
All right. Motion's made by Mr. Mason. Mr. McRoberts seconds it. Any more for further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mason. Approval of financial report, Mr. Parkinson.
At the end of the month of April, we had $6,025,046.36 in property and state tax supported funds. The education fund had actual expenditures of $1,348,370.82. Operations fund had actual expenditures of $485,865.72. We transferred $201,359.43 from the education fund to the operations fund. Just a reminder, that's a month of transfer now. We're doing a quarterly report. And for this upcoming month, we're going to plan on transferring with your approval, $189,974.84 from the education fund to the operations fund. So I request your approval of this financial report.
Hey, do we have first a motion to approve financial report, Mr. Parkinson's presented. I move. Dr. Beatty, do we have a second? Second, Mrs. Elliott. Any discussion or questions?
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Approval claims, Mr. Parkinson.
You'll notice on the reports and on the claims, we got a new format this month. This is a new format that we see moving forward. It also reset our claims numbers. So tonight for your approval, we have claims 100,000 through 100,206, $83,584.87 in pre-written, $477,197.98 in additional claims, for a total of $560,782.85. Request your approval of these claims.
Motion to approve claims is presented. So move. Mr. McRoberts, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Mason, any discussion or questions from Mr. Parkinson? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Approval payroll claims, Mr. Parkinson.
We have two payroll claims for your approval this month. April 17th payroll is $559,624.70. May 1st, $582,573.14. Just a note for the board, we continue to pay the $3 an hour premium pay for support staff that have been here on site. We've done a pretty good job of thinking controlling those costs, but it's a portion of our payroll.
Do a motion to accept the, approved rather, the payroll claims. Mrs. Elliott, do we have a second? Second. Dr. Beatty, any questions, comments?
I just have one quick question. I just saw your note about the $3. How, how has that accomplished what we were trying to accomplish? This is not necessarily about the claim itself, but the purpose for having the claim. Has that gotten people to say, hey, if I'll go work in person versus staying at home?
Yeah, yeah. There was a, you know, when we first entered into this scenario, we were going to have people working, people working from home and some people who couldn't do their work from home, staying at home, still being paid. We pretty quickly had a few staff members that pointed out that there was some net putting there for people that had to be physically on campus unless you were. When we implemented $3 an hour, we did find that we can handle the staff positions we expected. Most of the school corporations, each team there on the state, could have something similar to us. Conversations with other districts, folks in my district and other districts, their experiences similar. When they implemented the policy, they found that they were really good folks on.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Old business, there is none unless a board member has old meetings that I'm not aware of. All right. New business, consider approval personnel recommendations. Dr. Shaffer?
Yes, the personnel recommendations are in your packet. We have amendments, not as many this month as we would probably expect at this time of year in the current circumstance, so I would ask the board's approval of the personnel report.
Do we have a motion to approve the personnel report? So move, Mr. McRoberts, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Mason, questions, discussion? This is one of the smallest ones we've seen, just a hand for people. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the personnel recommendations signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Consider approval of summer school personnel and classes, Dr. Shaffer.
Yes, we do have the ability this summer to have summer school remediation. It will all be done virtually this year, at least through the first half of the summer. As we get through June, things could possibly change in the second half of summer, but for right now, we are preparing to have all of our typical summer school classes done virtually. And Mrs. Walker has put together a thoughtful memo to the board on exactly which class that those are, as well as a recommendation for personnel to staff those classes initially. And some small adjustments may need to be made within a section of a class or something to that effect. But for the time being, we recommend the summer school programs, both the courses that have been recommended as well as the staff to manage those classes. So that's the voice for.
Do we have a motion to approve the summer school schedule and personnel is presented? So move. Dr. Beatty, do we have a second? Mrs. Elliott, any questions, discussion?
So are all those teachers that are listed, did that cover all the classes that we're going to have, the study defined?
It does. It covers all the basic courses. Again, unless we would have a need to break out more sections or something like that as far as the types of courses, it does still include.
At what time is the enrollment for those courses concluded?
Typically, we will add students right through the last day or two of school. If there's a need to make up a course or perhaps even a late request, sometimes we still have room in that class. Somebody may want to take additional advanced courses, something like that, we're offering. We're going to put them in until classes are built.
And do we have, we talked about this in past years, do we have the ability to mix a course if enrollment's too low?
We do. Typically, the Department of Education requires that you have 15 persons average in all courses. This year, they're still encouraging that. They have waived that in case we have a lower count and lower number of course average. We can still have classes and still thank the Department of State. So we do have a little additional flexibility this year we don't have. But again, until we get really through next week, that will round out the numbers for those classes.
Okay, then, any other questions to say, look at Dr. Thomas.
Do you think there'd be more students doing summer school as a result of the online learning or? Depends. I think it depends. The parents that I've spoken to with kids that have not done well with online learning want nothing to do with it because it's online. And so those kids that have done well with online learning, like for example, like at the head government econ, will have probably the same number that have signed up with that in the past. So typically, if you're looking at doing a credit recovery type thing, I would be surprised if to have a lot of kids that jump at that because they've struggled in this learning environment. So we'll just see what happens.
Other questions, discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 6D, consider approval of textbook adoptions for 2020, 21 school years, Dr. Shaffer?
This is the year in our adoption cycle for adoption of English Language Arts for next year as well as world languages. Again, Mrs. Walker is headed up the process along with the committee. And she's put together a very good set of memos, the board information, both in terms of the process that was followed, the recommendations, which really run middle school, high school, and our world language areas, as well as the cost of those textbooks. And I know the, this year in particular, the committee put a lot of time and effort into getting the right selection. This fully brings all of our curriculum areas up to what I would call a truly viable curriculum across the board. It's been a few years since we've adopted English Language Arts materials since we worked through a process in our TBR fund. So I'm very happy to say that's now fulfilled and nice approval. We will see in middle school, we will see a resultant drop of about $7 or $8 per student. The new material will actually be less costly than the previous materials were. We'll see a little bit of an increase at the high school level, which is what we typically see with the adoption. But particularly in our Spanish area, when they were using a college text before, it was very expensive college text. They're adopting a high school text that's still being the same standards, but it's much less expensive because of the high school versus the college text. So we're going to see drops in cost there of $30 to $40 per text per year. So very glad to see the cost conscious work there that the teachers did also on behalf of our students. So unless there are questions, I would ask the board's approval of the English Language Arts and World Languages textbook adoption.
And Bill, a motion to approve the textbook adoptions as presented by Dr. Shaffer. So move. Mr. McRoberts, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Mason, any questions, discussion?
I would just like to thank Mrs. Walker for her very detailed background that she provided with us. She, I appreciate it. And the efforts of the committee.
Yes, I agree.
I'd like to make a point too. Dr. Shaffer made this memo to us on this item. We've kind of waited, it seems like, not just even in the last few years, but over the years, we've kind of waited to find that, that inexpensive electronic solution. And I think that that maybe has been held us up from time to time, waiting for the online solution that as prices are oftentimes as much or higher, or at least really close to the electronic version than to include of course a book copy. I think it's good that we're getting to those books. I'd also argue, just being one anecdote, and having only one student out of 2,600 or 2,400 students, that that book text is oftentimes important because when we have, when you're trying to create something on your computer and your text is also being accessed on your computer, unless you have two screens, that is oftentimes difficult to go back and forth and toggle between the text that you're learning from or working from and then actually then produce, you know, a paper or even answer a quiz or an online worksheet, something like that. So that, I think that the book is still that tactile book is very important. So I appreciate that we're still making those decisions. Any other questions or discussions about the adoptions? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 6D, approval of summer food service program, Mr. Parkinson.
So each year, we come to the school board asking for your permission to offer the summer feed program for our community. Interesting enough, for this year, we're actually operating under temporary emergency summer feed. We have been since, since school was suspended. This is a program that allows youth in the community newborn to age 18 to receive free meals. So we request your approval to offer that program again this summer.
Bill, a motion to approve the summer food service program. Very good. Mrs. Elliott, do we have a second? Second. Dr. Beatty, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 6D, consider approval of insurance, sorry, insurance, increase of student lunch fees, Mr. Parkinson.
In the same way, around this time of year, we come to the board each year looking at what our meal prices should be for next year. This year, we're recommending the increase that's been recommended by the USDA, which is 10 cents per lunch. The increase is meant to cover cost increases in providing food service to our students.
Bill, a motion to approve the approval of the increase of student lunch fees. So move. Dr. Beatty, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Mason, questions, discussion? Mr. Parkinson, is this an increase because we are going to lose money if we don't increase those daily costs? Or, I mean, talk about the recommended increase. Can you explain what that even means?
Yeah, it might be useful to, if we can bring Mrs. Stifte. She's better at than I am. So we receive reimbursement for our paid, free, and reduced meals from the federal government. It's for, for our paid meals, we receive reimbursement, somewhere in the neighborhood of $30 or $32 per meal. For our free students, we receive reimbursement in the neighborhood of about $3.30 per meal. So the target that the USDA sets each year is that meal prices, when you combine the reimbursed portion from the federal government and the paid portion from students and their families, be about equal to what the federal government offers for, for federal reimbursement for the free students. So for that year, for this year, it'd be a 10 cent increase to just about that.
Very good. I think that's helpful to understand. I've been toured some other districts where they're being forced to raise their lunches due to those numbers. And I always wondered why in the world that could be the case, but that's a little bit better explanation. Appreciate it. Any other questions?
I just thank you for including the fund balances at the end of the prior three years. I mean, it's significantly lower than what it's been. So I appreciate that perspective.
This spring has been, has been difficult and I mean, this is in some ways a small problem compared to many of the problems that we have right now. But yeah, there's no doubt about it. As we continue to serve meals, but we don't have students paying for meals. That is, that's a challenge for the food service fund. That fund is used to replace infrastructure. We've got some upcoming needs for some of the larger items, especially the high school itself. We've got some upcoming needs for some of the larger items, especially the high school itself. We'd like to pay for our food services.
Any other comments, discussion?
One thing I think to note too is the program that we're running right now is for virtually anybody that shows up. And so it's not just students of Danville, perhaps, to wherever you're having students that are paying for lunches. That's solely Danville students, correct?
That's a good point, yes.
So, not that we don't want to be generous and take care of, you know, the, those that are hungry. But in that same token, it does cost extra to run the program that we're running now.
Okay, any other discussion about the increase of student lunch fees?
Maybe just one point of clarification. On the program we're running right now is the summer feeding program. It's a federal program. We have to, by federal guidelines, we have to open that up to anybody in our area. Who wants to come to eat that's under eighteen. There's a couple other districts in the area doing the same thing. If you're part of that program approved for it, then you have to take on anybody in the area. I just, I don't want our community thinking that we're just choosing to serve students from outside the area by choice. The requirement of the federal program provides that for any student that's eighteen.
So, have a first and a second for the approval of the increase in student lunch fees. Item sixteen, any more discussion, questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item six F, consider approval of school police department renovation, Dr. Schaefer.
Yes, before the board's meeting is a resolution to establish a Danville school's police department. This is the first step, although it's an important one, in developing the department. This declaration would provide the official notice to, for the board, to give us, to report it administratively. I think it's important to bear in mind that this is a mutually beneficial group for the school and the town, which we've enjoyed a good relationship in terms of providing police services. The town staff did approach us earlier in the fall about our ability to form our own department, which it helps to, helps with their budget. It also helps us to continue our services into the foreseeable future. So what this does is allows us, the economy, to ensure we have officers that are trained to work in school environment, and are committed to do so. With safety being our top priority and needing to be budget conscious in the future, this is a step to ensure the future capacity provides safety services to our school community. So, over the last few weeks, I've been working with legal counsel, Shameless Vois, to develop a resolution, future steps. Mr. Vois has been involved in formations of other schools' police departments here in central Indiana. We've also conferred with Kevin Hill, our insurance agent, who tells us that he does not see any more insurance risk than we currently have with our town of Danville arrangement. Also set a meeting with Mark Morgan and Chief Hilton for next week to discuss potential transition steps in our current agreement. Now, that includes a potential transfer of the town-owned equipment, transition costs related to personnel, and future mutual aid arrangements, which are necessary to, for those forces to help each other out at the time. So, I know I provided the board's additional cost estimates and things of that nature. If you have questions, we'd have to answer those. If there's otherwise, the board's approval of the resolution as presented.
I'll give motions first and then a discussion. We have a motion to approve the establishment, the approval of the school police department resolution. Some move. Mr. Mason, do we have a second?
Second.
Doctor Beatty, discussion?
I haven't made a comment that I'd like to make based on some discussion that had come my attention. Obviously, the safety of our students is a paramount importance to me, as I know there's many of you. Having not gained the funding that we had hoped to have with our effort last year to build a secure entrance at our high school, I think it is now more imperative than ever that we have these resource officers. I also like that with our own department, we can train these officers to engage in the more delicate nature of protecting and working with minors of all ages. It's a much different demographic to being trained to work with the general adult population. I think that's very important for us. The town approached us, as Dr. Schaefer stated, many months ago. This has been either discussed or update provided probably at at least three, if not four, of our last six meetings. I feel we've been very transparent about the fact that this is imminent. The town has requested that we fast-track this more than not. I realize there's some concerns with the pandemic and what kind of economic effect that may cause. I would like to point out that we do have two brand-new subdivisions. One is suddenly locked right now. They just started within the last couple of weeks. And the other one is well underway, breaking ground and roads going in and infrastructure going in. I, as many of you may know, actually work in a title insurance business. We had the largest first quarter that we've had in years. Our count still remains extremely high. So I realize that most of you probably don't have anything more than a state or national perspective on the real estate market and the strength of that market. But unless something really changes significantly in the next few months, we are not seeing it in Enders County. We're not seeing it at all in this county. So I feel that if there is a large downturn that we're not anticipating, we can always change path if we need to. But without this resolution and this first step, we don't even have the option of putting together our own department. So I feel it's necessary that we take this first step. Go for your motion and your second.
Any other thoughts or discussion? I guess I just want to clear, so the resolution just will allow us to start the process. I mean, you've given us some cost estimates. I mean, can you walk us a little bit in regard to when we have to start making some financial type decisions with some of this?
Certainly. The, well, the next two significant steps are, this would allow, this allows us to establish the police force within our community, school's police force, ensures the police powers would be granted to those eventual officers by the board. What it does then is allows us to then start a search for the police chief or force. We currently enjoy a relationship with the town. We employ two officers jointly. We still look to have two officers or the equivalent of two officers in different ways to structure that, and we would have some flexibility to do. But name the police chief, we do the next step with the process for that. Following that, your police chief, using a transition like this, they're going to start working on your policies and procedures, your standards of care. All those guidelines are going to guide that police force and how they operate. So what we ideally see is over the next month to two months, hopefully, naming the police chief, and then giving the chief then a few months to get those other pieces in place. Our current agreement runs out if needed to sever. So essentially, we name the chief, they start on developing the protocols and procedural manuals. Somewhere in that process, maybe fall, late fall, or even early winter, that we would then have set in place and how we're going to staff that second position. So we have roughly the equivalent of the staff we really have now. And then theoretically, again, we will have some conversations with the county, but theoretically then, we would have a full transition by December thirty-first. That's, again, a rough timeline, some things can morph in there, but that's generally what we see.
That helps, because I just, we're not going to be in a position where we've got to rush something to try to have it done, ready to go at the start of the school year.
Correct.
Where, yeah.
And that's, that's a conversation we want to have with the town. They've been very good to work with. Because if we are to hire any of the current officers in any of the positions, then we would have a transition of a new agreement. So those pieces need to be worked out. As I mentioned earlier, we had some conversations about transition equipment. Some of those things need to be worked out. But with that prior conversation, just looking to continue those.
Some of, some of my concerns that I didn't express with some of you, and or as a group, as we discussed this, is, you know, cost. And one of the things that I'm just wanting to discuss openly is the fact that regardless of whether the town is paying fifty percent of our cost for the two officers, and the school board is paying fifty percent of the cost, the taxpayer is paying for any, any of the cost, and that is not a grant, right? Now, the grant is paid by tax dollars as well, but I'm talking about the local property taxpayer. With our grant, as you guys know, we've got again this year, eighty thousand dollar grants. That's our part of it, and then the town is the matching part, which is our requirement. So we're going to receive that, continue to receive that eighty thousand dollars. We're on the hook for eighty thousand more dollars. It just happens to be right now, the town's willing to pay that second half of those expenditures. One thing we do know, we don't know a whole lot moving into the future as far as what will happen next year and all this and that. Everyone's, you know, kind of wondering and trying to read the tea leaf. But one thing we do know is that our costs are going to go up. In that the town would like us to, tried to have us sign a contract this fall, as we remember asking Dr. Schaefer to take that back and see if we could renegotiate it, which is going to be the seventy-thirty split. So thirty, so twenty more percent of the house cost are going to come to us anyway. But I guess as a taxpayer, I'm looking at this from kind of a, a kind of a neutral increase or decrease, really, because it's whether my property taxes are going to the town and paying for it, or whether my property taxes are going to the school and paying for it. And I think in a greater context, with the conversations I've had with town, town leadership, this is an opportunity, I think, when the school is paying for that, to include the entire tax base for the school, which includes Marion Township as well, paying for this as opposed to just the town of Danville taxpayers paying for for this amount as well. Although I think that that's a very minor consideration in the whole discussion that we're having, which is more about just providing a better service. And then lastly, my two cents as well, not two cents, twenty cents of the dollar, twenty percent of the vote, is that this allows us to ensure that, like Mrs. Elliott said, the officers that are working for the school to be specifically trained and professional development focused over the years and over time on that area. And maybe Cory can speak to that to an extent. But I know that a school resource officer, even in my layman's understanding of it, is, is a lot different and from a day-to-day standpoint than maybe, you know, a highway patrol officer or something like that. So that, I think, is important to me, to make sure that that education's happening, higher than the votes.
Yeah. It's night and day, you know, the, the, if Corporal Allop was here, he'd be the, he'd be the best one to explain it, because he's lived both worlds too, and most recently, you know, I started my law enforcement career in ninety-four. That was at a university campus. I've worked the street then for several years, and now I'm at an airport. So I've seen a little bit, and there's completely different policing at an airport as compared to the street, as compared to a university. A school is completely different than the street as well, and it takes a different mentality to work with students. You obviously cannot be near as heavy-handed at all in a school as you could be on the street and understand the environment that you're in. And it's quite a transition to go from working the street into the school. And this allows for us to have those officers keep in that frame of mind that you are in a school instead of trying to transition back and forth. Corporal Allop, would you like to add anything else to that?
Yeah, I mean, it's especially a training position. I mean, you have different training and certifications required by the state that aren't typically required by a regular officer. That being a forty-hour S R O training and a continued education beyond that. You know, I realized when I started in the position here in the school, it's way different working the road, working in the school, the way you handle students, the way that's learned about trauma, I learned about different ways and why that student's behaving that way. On the street, you arrest them, they can yell, and you're out of the next case. This is a little different from our, so it's, it's a lot different.
This allows the officers to gain those relationships, which are very, very important too, not only with students, but with faculty and staff of the school corporation. And those relationships are very, very, very important. So it's not just somebody from the outside coming into the school for, you know, a few certain hours. This makes them part of the family that we have here at the school corporation, and builds those relationships, which helps with the policing, if you will, the security, and with the students as well. It gives a lot of students some, somebody as a resource and authority figure that they can rely on and can gain a confidant, if you will.
I don't know, go ahead sharing with maybe Dr. Beatty. I remember, no, it's Tim. I was at Butler when they went from a public safety department to a police department. And I remember some of us students were all up in arms because, oh my goodness, these men and women are now going to be, instead of carrying tasers and mace, you know, guns and this and that. And, you know, the world has changed, and we've been successful for a number of years now having sworn Danville Police Department officers, sworn in officers in our schools. And whether we like the fact that we feel a bad need anymore today, it is what we have. And I know that Dr. Beatty and myself, and I think Amy and Cory maybe have been on the board long enough where we were serving when the last school shooting occurred. I can't tell you, you know, how many calls you get, wanting more. Heck, some people were calling leaders in the community, calling me, asking me if we could put metal detectors up at every doorway, right? So the cost of that is very prohibitive, and we were finding ways to still ensure safety, but also be cost-conscious. And that's why I like the idea of formalizing this a little bit for us, because we'll have a mind or minds, plural, on, on our facilities and the safety on a regular basis versus just the natural distraction that occurs when your boss is across town and is a police chief with a lot of other responsibilities to keep him focused, right? So, and that's my, that's I think all I have to say about it, but Dr. Beatty, any comments or anyone else?
This allows us to add full-time employees, and Dr. Schaefer had alluded to this. In the summertime, we don't get the advantage of having them here to work on necessary stuff such as security plans or security upgrades. They're working the street for the town of Danville through our agreement. This will allow them time to work on those security plans, the administrative aspect of that position that we so desperately need in today's.
That's a really good point, because during the, during the school year, they're working, actively working, essentially have time to plan, right? So that is a good point. I know that we have officer of all on, not on loan, because we're paying for part of it, a part of this, of course, but for the summer, but I know that our other officers not working with us this summer, so, or this school year, so, end of the school year. All right, any other questions or discussions or questions for Dr. Schaefer with regards to the resolution in front of us? One thing I want to point to as a discussion point that I've had with individual board members, it's important that we have a discussion here, our open meeting, is if you've noticed here on the therefore would be resolved that on the back page of the second page of the resolution, item three is the superintendent's directed president candidate for the board to appoint as chief of the DCSC Police Department. So we'll expect Dr. Schaefer to get back to us after this meeting as to how he'll go about doing that. But that's what we're in this resolution, asking him to come forth with. But that's what we're in this resolution, asking him to come forth with, whether that's a committee or however you want to do it. I just wanted to make sure that that was understood. Any questions on the, or other comments or any changes to the resolution that are in front of us? Okay, having discussion, if all those in favor of approving the school police department resolution as presented by Dr. Schaefer, your board, signified by saying aye. Aye, all votes, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Next item along the agenda is six G, consider approval of the L W L C preschool, North South Elementary, E C M S and E C H S handbook for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one school, Dr. Schaefer.
Now, pleased to say we have all the, all the handbooks here at the same time, including the Little Warrior Women's Center, which is nice, and that they have really come along nicely in the last couple of years. Appreciate all the work that's went into developing that from scratch. The handbooks have been updated for your approval. I will take it, there are a lot of large, significant changes in there, most of these are administrative. We got some help and all those updates that are going to be required by law. Trying to answer any questions you have, we'll ask for approval of the four handbooks as presented. Again, note the, the elementary covers both North and South Elementary.
Right, this is the first time we've met them all at once, maybe not, but I want to have a motion to approve the handbooks as presented. Dr. Beatty, the second. All right, Mrs. Elliot, question or discussion?
Do the students have this in P D F form, Anna Hardt copy at the high school or? I think they're all electronic now. Correct, Dr. Hommert, from our level, they're electronic.
They're all, yeah.
And I, I, yeah, I want to thank our building principals, I know they personally put a lot of time into this, our directors, and also Jim Bryant, Policy Committee, because our process is, once those are updated, it's a building level of a good policy committee for review and consistency, and then from the central office, I appreciate all their collective work on it.
No, no, I just can't see it on my screen, okay. I have a quick question, and this perhaps requires a little bit of class participation. But it's, are there any, and the answer might be no for the principals. But we've read through these, but are there any one or two items that are significantly different that you would say, hey, if I'm sharing this with a parent, you know, in the fall, I'm putting an asterisk by these one or two things? I see the one participant, Dr. Hammon, is shaking his head no. I was probably most familiar with yours, but how about the other three schools?
They're pretty much all the same, and the middle school is just real similar to the high schools.
There are no significant changes, and I, I send it through chat also.
Very good. Thanks, Mrs. Webster.
You're welcome.
See your picture. All right, I'll let that go then. All right, any other questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor by approving the L W L C preschool and the four school handbooks? Well, North South saying, signified by saying aye. Aye, all votes, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item six H, consider approval of Danville Public Library trustee, Ann Tussie, Dr. Schaefer.
Yes, by statute, the Danville School Board is tasked with appointing a member to the Danville Public Library Board. They have a current vacancy, and Tussie has reached the end of her first term. We received a letter from them notifying us of this opening, and they also are recommending that Andy be reappointed to the same capacity for another term, and that's up to consideration by this board. But that suggestion is certainly there for your consideration.
We have a motion to approve appointing Mrs. Ann Tussie to the Danville Public School of Library trustee, some group. Mr. Mason, the second. Dr. Beatty, any discussion or questions?
This is under the assumption that Miss Tussie wants to be
Yes, right. Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, signified by saying aye. Aye, all votes, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mrs. Tussie. Six, aye, discussion of school board meeting minutes and summaries, Dr. Schaefer.
It's like, that's an individual conversations with different board members, and just thinking about what's kind of the right amount of information to include in the written board minutes for board meetings. As you know, by policy, we then approve the previous meetings minutes at the next board meeting, and then we post those thereafter. So I looked at your resources, certainly looked at our own policy, also conferred with Police of Pansyl at I S B A, just to get her take on what are the official minutes, exactly what the meeting will look like, et cetera. And she referred to Indiana Code by fourteen, one point five dash four. And when you look at that alone, it would tell you that, you know, if you're keeping recorded minutes, which we do also, you could actually post your recorded minutes, and you wouldn't need to keep any written minutes by, only by statute. But she also referred to the Public Access Counselors handbook and some of the things there. And in that, and under the open door law, it does state that as, as a meeting progresses, memoranda should be kept. Well, memoranda typically refers to something written or written minutes, which we do also keep written minutes. Written minutes, though, only need to contain, even through the open door law of Public Access Counselor, the date, the time, which members attended the meeting, and then a general summary of each meeting agenda item, whether it's an action item, a discussion item, or just informational. But you keep a general synopsis of that, and it might look something like the superintendent made a recommendation for X and the school board members approved X, a five-zero vote, a list, list vote. And we certainly do that now, we provide a little bit more detail than that now. But that's, those were some balancing points that she made of the types of minutes that you might want to keep. So what she suggested, a very good way to approve the minutes would be in the form of the basic written minutes accompanied by, if you have audio, tape reports, or video recorded indeed. Now, right now, we only do audio, we're just beginning to do video. Zoom or recording now individually will be posted tomorrow, so the board is comfortable with that, talk about that news a little bit. But those things are actual very detailed minutes of the meeting. So currently, what you're, what you're governed by here in terms of policy is school board policy zero, one, six, eight in regard to keeping minutes. And you may have worked with that, so I'm not going to go back through it, but I would offer two suggestions I think would be helpful. One, if you would like to have a summary posted to the website, because that's the challenge, is sometimes you're waiting thirty days to get the information back out, I'm afraid, and that's good and bad. It's bad because you can't get information out as quickly, it's good because nothing really goes out until the official body has approved those minutes. Now, it's a little bit different if you're sort of summarizing a meeting versus if you're quoting actual facts from that meeting, like you might catch on audio recording and a video recording, if you need one of this. So what we might think about doing is you could post a summary of factual information to the website, like, for example, tomorrow about this meeting. I don't think, there certainly would not be official minutes that have been approved by the board, but if the board were to tell the administration, hey, we'd like to have a summary posted, so we'd be able to get quicker information out, but we certainly could do that. But it would be loaded with a factual set of items that the board, of things that the board approved at that meeting. Location of posting, I think, would be important to be agreed upon, so that you have a comfort level of going, where is the school corporation going to put that information? If you want it on the school site only, you want it on Facebook only, Instagram, where would you like to have that posted? So that you, as board members, know what information will appear over the next day or two. That's one thought. Secondly, from my past experience, I found this to be very useful. Right now, the board, we use Board Docs, an online support system for, for board meetings. There are two versions to Board Docs. We are currently using Board Docs L T or Lite, which is a Lite version, which does not have all the fully functioning features that Board Docs Pro has. In my past, I used Board Docs Pro. It does have a few more features that allow it to be a little bit more functional, in particular when it comes to recording minutes during the meeting, and also editing sound or audio and video component. For example, with Board Docs Pro, we can take the audio recording, and Mrs. Smith, bless her heart, she's the one that is blessed for all doing all of the minutes over the next few days after the meeting. What she would do with Board Docs Pro, is she would begin the meeting, listening to it, and then digitally you can mark where a discussion item starts, and then mark where that same discussion agenda item ends. You can take that segment and link it right to the board agenda topic. So after the minutes are approved, a user could go in, if they wanted to see Agenda Item I, they would simply go click on Agenda Item I, and they could hear where this discussion began, right, the word ended. If that was a five-minute discussion, they don't have to listen to five minutes to get every word that was uttered on that topic. Now, I believe this has the capability now, if we are video recording, we could probably bring up the video segment to do the exact same thing, video and audio. So that's another consideration. That is a higher premium, we can get a discount to Indiana School Board Association. If you would want to shift to Board Docs Pro instead of Board Docs Lite. So a couple thoughts there. We could post factual pieces of the board meeting, of just factual things that you approved. We could do that for the next day or two, if we do a follow-up board meeting. Another consideration would be to move to Board Docs Pro, that would allow you to link specific segments of the meeting to the agenda items. We would still bring those agenda items back at the next meeting to be officially approved by the board.
This is an open discussion. I know that when we first went with Board Docs, it was a waste, step above what we were doing. I can't remember, what's the cost difference, do you know, between Lite and Pro?
I would, that's a great point, I would need to research that to get a current number, but I'm going to tell you it's a two thousand dollars for the entire year.
That's what I was thinking, it was a two or four thousand dollar difference between the two, that you get capabilities. We start off with the Lite version, because you ease into it, kind of like with any program, once you get proficient, you're better at one thing, you can move into the next phase, that it can utilize what it's intended to do. So I think that's, I think looking into Board Docs Pro would probably be a way of progressing this.
One additional feature it has, I think, you know, sometimes they have features, right? Maybe that, some are more useful than others. One of the other useful features is it gives you, as a board member, a place to put your own annotated notes that are confidential privately, which can be very handy as you're trying to not take or not keep. Those are kept separately, your confidential, those are kept separately from the board package itself, which is another feature. It has a little more robust library and search feature, it has different things like that. It, I think, a little bit more uniformly sanctioned board policy also into, into the board site location, even more fluid for this one does.
And you would actually have the capabilities of voting through the door.
Yes, and when you go to online, if you want to have any home participation in the future, have an interactive type of board meeting, you need to have that feature that will allow you to vote online. Because you can actually vote and record your vote, you would see sort of that running agenda up here on the big screen, and you could see what each board member voted, and it fills in a regular button.
Just, I'm sorry.
If we started just in the next, like, after the meeting, maybe after June, assuming we don't have anything else lined up between now and then, if we were to post the minutes or the abbreviated summary, is there a way, and this might be a question for Mr. Reader, or maybe Ashken, is there a way to track how many people clicked on that? To get an idea of how popular this concept will be, and if investing more technology where people will actually listen to that recording is something that will actually be utilized and be a good investment?
You mean specifically on Board Docs?
No, I mean, like, just this month and next, just they go to the website or wherever it is
So it depends on the platform.
To click on that and read it.
It depends on the platform, like, we do have a way to track, like, social media pages, I have a way to track those a lot more specifically than the website. Website will just give me a general number at the end of every month. It doesn't exactly let me see, like, where they're clicking and how long they're on the page. And as far as Board Docs goes, I haven't seen any analytics for Board Docs.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to speak to Board Docs. I could say, you know, if we upload the video to FEMEO or a provider, if we show something like YouTube or FEMEO, we would definitely see clicks by how many people viewed the video. So we would be a little bit of a meat bag, but not necessarily how much time has been in each specific section or something.
From a, from a solid factual standpoint, another option with the board could choose to do is whether it was just the audio or the video. If you're comfortable, we could post the, the audio or video after the meeting, and if they have it written, then it's a pretty good following lead. That might be another option, just, yeah, that's just a continuous feed of all the facts that were done and said during the meeting, it would be another option.
But let's just open up item J as well, right? This is kind of in together, and you probably have some more comments possibly for item J, maybe not. But just one, one thought of this discussion is, the whole purpose, right, though, is to make sure that we are being, sharing information that's happening in the meeting even that much more openly. And so I really appreciate the idea of, you know, understanding how many people are interested in getting this information in order to determine how much we spend to, to promote it via, you know, like, using a software like Board Docs Premium or whatever it's called. But at the same time, I think it's our responsibility to utilize the technologies that we have in front of us to, you know, get the word out and make it available. Whether the citizen chooses to care, we can't really, we can't really force someone to care, but we sure as heck can make sure that the information is there. And I think right now, we're relying on, we'll have a meeting, and we're relying on, you know, you know, third-party discussion of, you know, why it occurred. And it's best, I think, just to have the video available, so someone can go back and check the record. And I think that's always, for any governing body, the best thing you can do. One of the, the, one of the things that I learned when I worked with Mayor Goldsmith was sunlight is the best antiseptic, meaning for government, meaning, you know, it's, it's just shine light on what you're doing and let everyone see it, and that's the best thing to, to have, and help a good government, and that's what we're trying to do, right? So I'm in favor for Board Docs and taking the video and splicing it up and doing all these things. Anything we can do to make it easier for constituents, I think is really important. But I think, you know, we're missing opportunities by not having our, our meetings recorded via video and audio. Audio is, you know, and, you know, just to poke some fun at it, I mean, you know, we've had video capabilities, you know. Some of us had Dad walking around camcorders forty years ago, right? So it's not a big deal for us to get video, and I think for us to put that up on the web, that the morning after is fine. I mean, I think it has to be simulcast, right, a live feed, because that's just another technological cost. And we do have the open meetings, so someone can come and see it, but if they can't make it for whatever reason, that way they can see it in the morning, it eliminates them just relying on our, our
Yeah, and I would ask Bill Reader to maybe give the board a little bit of an idea. As we begin to do more recording, in this room, we have a better paper going out, it looks a lot like spaghetti out here when we're socially distanced, but when we're together, it works very well. We went from handheld recording only to the wireless system that we had at South, which worked, was not real robust, to this wired system, which does work well. And what we have the ability to do is integrate that with video by simply mounting a couple of, you know, good cameras, and we have to run wire in back to the supply closet back here, and some software, to then record that in a professional way, and then be able to load that up to the web. I know Bill's been doing some research, and feel free to spin that, put it around if you need to, face, face the door here, I know it's probably difficult to see in the sideways. Just to think about, how would we record that, and what platform would, or what media would we release that through then for the public's viewing?
Yeah, and I think we have a couple of challenges. Video is the first challenge, and as Dr. Schaefer said, we would probably look to mount a couple of cameras in the ceiling. And the reason that's important is it's static, there aren't going to be any time where it's out of focus or out, you know, it's there, it's always there just at the push of a button. And the first quote that we got was from the vendor who installed the sound system. And I think that's important just because a lot of times when you have different vendors on project, they can, they start to blame each other if something goes wrong, and being able to other if something goes wrong. And being able to integrate the video with the sound is important because it's going to keep us from picking up like all the ambient noise in the room. And the noise that's coming from this microphone back to that control room will be recorded right there and captured right there instead of like relying on the, the very Jimmy Rig solution we have going on tonight with the Zoom and everything. So I, I, I feel like sticking with that vendor is the right way to go from a performance standpoint. And that would give us the opportunity to do it real time. We could, we could stream live if we wanted to, to YouTube or Vimeo or something else. I haven't really decided on the, the platform yet. Really, the hardware is the first thing given place. And then you choose the platform. We could go live, but, or we could just like, like Mr. Stewart mentioned, we could publish it the next day or, you know, whatever timeframe we'd like to do.
Excellent.
Yep.
So, you know, we could continue to record on Zoom, which is, this is, it's a bit awkward. You know, you sort of have this real presence and sort of virtual presence. It's difficult because we're recording literally off of each computer camera. But we can do that. We're doing that tonight. And if we get comfortable, we can post that tomorrow. We can download it today, load it up tomorrow, and be able to have that posted. But I think perhaps a better way to build in the future is to install the rest of the new system. We have the sound in place and just be installing the video component to that and continue to record meetings on the new system, you know, patching those minutes. We could release the recording the next day and then approve the minutes if the next meeting and their policy requires. Get comfortable with that where it's not real time, it's recorded and posted the next day. But once they're more familiar and comfortable with the new system, then you could perhaps record real time, stream it out during the meeting. And perhaps over, of course, for a few meetings, you get comfortable with that. And then as the system allows and as comfortable the board is, you could get to a point where we needed to do some sort of interactive meeting, maybe as we had at the last meeting, where you may have a need to be able to interact with people from their homes, perhaps even have that capability in time. But I think my advice, we can kind of take it one step at a time. Let's post, let's get a little better system to house the sound and the video. Let's post that. And then let's move towards streaming live. And then if you want to get to an interactive component, then certainly have an opportunity over the course of several meetings.
So, question. So Bill, would that mean that you need to upgrade what we currently have to as far as our?
The sound will stay. The sound will stay. This, this new hardware, if you will, and new, new system would just be adding video capability. And the key, I think, to making, making it all work well is that it's the same vendor. The quote that we got was with this sound stuff in, in the picture. So they, they're picking specific video hardware and, and systems to work with that sound, sound software and hardware.
So that kind of range, you already, that's what they quoted or?
Yeah, yeah. And it's, you know, speaking a little bit just to Zoom, Zoom is letting all education customers and probably most government use their software for free right now. That's going to go away at the end of this school year. And so the free version normally has a 40-minute time limit. So we don't have a lot of 40-minute board meetings, although I think if that could possibly set that limit, maybe, no, I'm just kidding. So that's going to be no longer an option once the free version goes away. And that, it can be costly. The licensing is a per student basis and it, it can cost quite a bit over the year and it'd be an annual expense.
One thing you said that I, I just want to caution on, and with the Board Docs Pro, if we, we do go that way, does it have a capability of hosting the entire meeting as well? And the reason I say that is, well, for a segment of our constituents, unfortunately, this board has lost some of the faith in them for whatever reason. And if we go to splicing those conversations, I can just hear that segment start to accuse us unfairly of blocking out some of those conversations. So to eliminate that from the get-go, I would like to see the whole conversation posted on there so that accusation is not made.
We, we currently in our minutes, again, we, we wait until the minutes are approved. But for example, the April recording will be posted at the end of our agenda down at the bottom where our minutes are posted. So we, we currently do that. We have, you know, from A to Z, the entire audio recording. And we could continue to do that. We could post the entire audio or video file at the end. So it's complete. And then it would be linked segment by segment to each of the board night. We could do that.
Okay, right now it's happening on the most of our.
Yes.
Yeah, so it takes 30 days of that upfront.
Yes.
Any other questions? I think we kind of have like some general takeaways to do. If one, we just want to make sure that we want to get to the point very fast that we're able to provide a video recording for the constituents to be able to see. I think we're probably a little bit agnostic as to whether it's YouTube or Vimeo or what have you. And it could just be a spot that we find on our, our website. Perfectly find people knowing where to go to and you can go to that as opposed to having it posted to six different places during the meeting. And then with regards to our, if you do that, you might not then have to provide that, that sketch, if you will, that unapproved summary of the, the meeting minutes right away. But you could do that as well, but we just want to make sure that they're marked that they haven't been approved. And they'll be approved, obviously, with any adjustments in the next meeting for our board policy. But if you have the video, it gets to the point where you don't have to worry as much about that. But I really love the idea to cut down on people's time. It's a real pain to sit and watch a video and try to fast forward to that thing, try to find what you're looking for. So if we can get to the point where we can give segments, but then like Mr. Mason said, also have some where you can watch the whole thing. I think that'd be really helpful. You can probably do that really fast.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be a little, a little bumpy, but I think literally starting tomorrow, we can provide the video we have now through Zoom, just to stay on our timeline to getting the equipment in. And that takes more than 30 days. We can do it the next week similarly, but I think within 60 days, we could probably get new, new hardware. So, and have a new platform to do that.
So is that okay with all of us that?
I, I agree with you, Mr. Stewart. I think it's important that we're as transparent as we can be.
Great. Okay. Thank you. That's all for that discussion point. Thank you, Mr. Rader. Six K, consider approval of open summer latchkey program. Dr. Schaefer?
Yes. It's, it's interesting because we're very rapidly beginning to think about coming back to school. And first and foremost, we have to think about the needs of our families and kids that participate in our latchkey or PACE program, some are, you know, preschool or daycare setting. So we begin to think about can we, or when can we open our latchkey program backup to the public? That is an essential service. We have had conversation with the Department of Education, local health department, the legal counsel, and our insurance. We've contacted all of them. And they said, yes, you, you can open your latchkey program backup if you choose to do that as long as you follow all the recommending, the Department of Health, distancing and cleanliness and health, always considerations of the current circumstances. So we, we surveyed our families and we have about 30 or so students or families who potentially participate, including some additional preschool age students. We have to make a decision on that in terms of the number that it's feasible to do that. But we've been in touch with, with all the right people in terms of getting approval for, for health considerations. And we've also thought about too, if we have a confirmed case of COVID, you know, how we would handle that. Certainly if that were to occur, we would reach out immediately to our, our health department, both our local and state, to get guidance. We've talked to at least one other local provider who is, has been operating and it's been running very well for them. So that gives us some, some confidence that it would work well for us. But we have, what we're beginning to see is people go back to work, not only did we have this, students of essential workers here in the community, we're having more and more of our parents who are also getting called back to work and have that need for additional childcare. So what we'd like to have is a board permission to open up as early as this May 25th, as our numbers allow. And again, we will keep group sizes and adult to student groups small. We will spread them out in different areas and keep those groups apart. We will provide them nutrition as we normally do. We will have check-in and check-out procedures, not only for security, but for safety in terms of health. All of those things will, will be followed, including wearing masks, including hand sanitizing, frequently hand washing with the students. Try to keep them socially distanced, especially, we can socially distance the groups, but it might as well prepare the children. You can't always socially distance the children. And themselves are in a group, but we would do our very best to do that. I don't know. I know Mr. Parkinson has spent quite a bit of time checking with different groups, so, yes, additional comments or information?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good summary. The thing I reiterate from, from Dr. Schaefer is if we move forward with it, we're going to check with all the health authorities we can, especially the local county, Department of Health, and make sure that, that we're in line with any guidance that they have. Try and carry out this program as safely.
How does that work with the governor? You know, schools are supposed to be closed until June 30th, so are we going against that order or is that, is this a problem or something different?
That's, it's a great question. That was our very first question. And schools are considered an essential service. And what DOE and Department of Health have told us is that this is something that's essential for us and our community. It is something we can offer. Department of Education actually reached out to the school districts here a few weeks ago where they had to have some care and coverage for essential workers. So they're, they're actually asking some schools to open up their programs. We're at a point where we're, we're getting more of a need in the community because of parents being called back and working, in some cases, some of our own workers, bringing them back off for our essential workers in our support staff. So the need is growing greater. So this definitely falls within an acceptable range as being an essential service. And so therefore those, those powers should be enforced. Yes, you could, you could do this.
Question. Let's hit pay a motion real quick. Bill, a motion to approve the opening of summer latchkey program as presented by Dr. Schaefer. Dr. Bailey, you have a second? Second, Mr. McRoberts, continue discussion.
One thing, just for the boards of awareness, at some point here in August, we're going to get asked to go back to school. We're not quite sure what that looks like yet. But I think one opportunity to also provide this is to begin to establish those care procedures. Do we check temperatures? Who wears masks? Is it, you know, staff certainly? How about students? What are those entry procedures? How many doors do we let kids go in and out of? How do we, you know, clean after them? And sort of a new goal? What do our group sizes need to be limited to? This is going to give us a really good opportunity to establish those procedures and find out what works really well in education setting. So it is also very advantageous for us in that regard as well. Again, not, not quite sure what's coming in August. But we'll probably have a range of options. A lot of people can have between now and then.
I've got one comment, I guess, and maybe a question. So say it's kind of a trial run on this. What if we see a need that we need more housekeeping during the day while students are in? So we're going to make those, possibly make those adjustments as we get closer to school. I know it's hard to get housekeeping staff. So with all this, what you have to do now is going to take more time and be done more frequently than what's probably going to be done now.
Actually, yeah, it's, it's a great question. Here in the summer, we have, we have a lot of flex to shift our, our housekeeping staff. But quite honestly, before we, before schools were closed, while we were still in session for that other week, we had shifted our housekeeping to cleaning services every day. So we, we know we have the capability to sort of keep up with the cleaning in a way that it needs to be done. It's our door handle, desktops, those types of things, as well as providing some additional cleaning materials to the classroom teacher and students. So if a student wants to grab a, a wipe and clean their own desktop during sessions, they have the ability to do that on top of the daily surface cleaning that we've been doing for our housekeeping staff. We really ramped that up that last week before we went on, on closure. And it seemed to work well. Our, our cleaning staff really did a phenomenal job of keeping, keeping up with the demand. So we feel like even in a normal setting where everybody back to school, we'd think we could manage that. If we would see additional procedures here in the summer, it kind of gives us a chance to recognize that and getting to have that flex in the summer to shift a person or two we would need to.
Dr. Schaefer, he gave us a memo about the extra PPE that we've acquired or we're trying to acquire and the different things that we need, having a greater need for more frequent cleaning and protection of employees and students. How comfortable are we that that's going to arrive? Or has that arrived? Or are we on a list somewhere, right, to get this stuff?
The answer is both and fun product that we're looking for. We do have some PPE that's, that's on order and like many other people are experiencing. So if it's taking longer to get here, we'd like for it to. We're hearing from the vendor that's going to be here this week. So I guess optimism. We have had a real increase in the number of vendors that have reached out in the last week or so saying they've got masks and they've got gloves and they've got thermometers in stock. So I think the supply chain is beginning to catch up in terms of the inventory that organizations like ours can be appreciated.
And, and we are purchasing all of those for our, our staff. So you just make sure that we have adequate supply.
I was thinking, any other questions?
I could just add that as an essential business, we're probably more than half of our staff is working in the office and has from day one. If you learn to implement this stuff right away, it's necessary, but it's also necessary to provide an essential service. And with even more people going back to work, I think, I think it's important to have that proper, with the health department, states, guidelines.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor by approving the measure signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same side motion carries. Thank you. Six L, consider approval of surplus equipment, Mr. Parkinson?
We have some surplus equipment that we'd like to request the ability to dispose with. We've got two nurse station beds, 28 cafeteria tables from north, 22 cafeteria tables from south. Those are both replaced with 219 general obligation by proceeds. Those tables, it, it was time for an upgrade in the safety perspective. And then we also have 173 chairs that accompany the tables in South Mountain.
We have a, a motion to approve the surplus, identification of surplus equipment. So who? Mr. Mason, you have a second? Second, Mr. McRoberts, discussion?
What, well, I'm sorry. What will happen with tables?
We're going to, we're going to place an ad in the, the local newspaper letting folks know those tables are available. And we're going to do some outreach to a few local organizations that we think might be able to, to benefit from. They have to go through the, of course, request process through us letting us know they're interested in tables. But it's our intent, if we can, to get them in the hands of folks that could use them as opposed to just.
I, I was just going to suggest maybe we could reach out to shared blessings and see if perhaps they could use them for their program.
All right, all those in favors signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same side motion carries. Superintendent's report, Dr. Schaefer?
I appreciate your patience. We had a lot of items to cover tonight, so I will forego an additional report. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, seven B legislative updates. Mr. McRoberts, no updates yet. Very good. Community input. At this point, we have someone who has signed up for a community endpoint, an endpoint, input. And before Ms. Short comes to the podium, anyone else who would like to have community input tonight can come complete. You know what? I'll do you a favor. I'll fill it in for you, Mr. Potter, since you.
I, I didn't realize I was supposed to.
No big deal. So I'll put you on here after Mrs. Short.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Am I raising, raising man? Okay, you're on. Thank you.
Please feel free to adjust that microphone. Okay. Hi, board, and Dr. Schaefer. My name is Jessica Shore and I live at 113 Parkview Drive in Clear Creek subdivision. Recently, the Daniel School Corporation released a letter regarding the bus changes within a one-mile radius box zone of South, Middle, and the high school locations. This change directly affects Clear Creek subdivision as in our hardest house from the school is Point 9, which is on my street, Parkview. My house is Point 7. We have at least probably 10 to 15 houses that are at least Point 9 from the school. I do not want our children in Clear Creek to just be a statistic on a piece of paper that is just causing you to cut a budget to place money somewhere else. I want you to see. I want you to see a face that would be affected by the change that you're putting in place. One that I can specifically, specifically talk about is my son Colt. I brought a picture of him, so you can see him. He is in second grade at North Elementary. He had, if you've ever met Colt, you know, he's smart, he's kind, and he's a bit funny. He loves all things football, bikes, baseball. He's also honestly an incredible kid. While Colt is great, is a great kid, he gets lost a lot. He forgets things and honestly wanders away from us at times when we think he sees something shiny or something he's interested in. I think we can all say we've lost a kid at some point in our lives at some store looking at something they shouldn't have been. Colt is one of those kids. With only being seven years old, I let him ride his bike out in front of our house on Parkview, but not out of eyes' reach, or unless he's with his big sister, as you can see, Maddie. Could we as a community rely on a child like Colt, a seven-year-old, to walk up to Point Nine miles after getting off the bus south to his home? Could we trust that Colt would not get lost, to go straight home and to not talk to any strangers? If you've ever been in Clear Creek, you are aware, we have streets that wind and curve. It's easy to get lost as an adult when you're walking through our neighborhood, more or less a kindergarten or first grader or second grader walking from south. We have over 75 kids just like Colt in Clear Creek that would be negatively affected by this change. After the letter went out, I reached out to our HOA and I put a poll in our community. We have a community page. And I said, hey, will you please fill out the survey to let us know how many kids we actually have in Clear Creek? So after we had the, people filled out the survey on Google Forms, we had over 75 in a matter of a week that signed up to send their kids ride the bus, which is a huge number of children in our community that would now be walking. We also have an issue of people speeding in our neighborhood. They don't watch for kids as it is, more or less takes 75 of them walking home from school every day. I challenge each of you to put yourselves in a single-parent household with a child just like Colt. You know you cannot be late for work, which starts before the pickup lines open. You barely have enough money for groceries, more or less paying for before-after-school care, and there's no way for you to get him to school and make it on time to a job that is a necessity for your family. Most parents would leave him at home to get dressed and walk to school on his own. I know we can all attest, we've seen these kids that come to school that don't have coats, that don't have hats, don't have gloves. It's 15 degrees outside, and they always wander in the pickup line. Who bought them dressed? A lot of them get dressed on their own. In the neighborhoods that we're asking to walk in a one-mile radius, there's dozens of kids just like that, that their parents would leave for work and except to them to get dressed. I challenge you, most parents will leave them, but as a community, we need to do better. We have 50% of our school year, we have horrible weather. We're from Arkansas originally, we're used to good weather. As you can admit, when we moved to Indiana, it was very clear, we have different weather here. So as a community, as a school district, we have to do better for kids that are just like Colt, and I hope you agree, and we'll reconsider your transportation plans for the next full year.
Thank you, Jessica Short. Mr. Potter?
Dave Potter, 1947, Vicings Road in Danville. A few comments. First of all, the opening ceremony tonight with the students, graduated students going into military, one of the neatest things I've seen happen at a board meeting. I loved it. So congratulations, I'm glad you did that. That would make, make coming to me worthwhile. Secondly, regarding the establishment of the police department, you all are aware that I felt that decision should be delayed. Apparently, there's been more discussion of it than I was aware. I, I would say that I only hope that a year from now or when this epidemic is behind us, we'll all look back and say, my concern will sound that you made the right decision. So we'll see. The main reason I came though was to offer two suggestions. One, Mr. Mason made a comment about, when you were talking about the Board Doc Pro, there's, there's a lot of animosity in the community between, you know, the community and the board or the school. So I've been thinking about how might, what might be done to alleviate some of that. One of the suggestions, I really liked what you said on the Board Doc Pro, being able to go to the minutes and, and hear just that section of the minute, that, that I would find very useful. I would really like that. But my suggestion on it would be, is there a way that you could set up a email distribution list? So that when you post something to the Board Docs, an email would go out to those interested parties that would say, hey, there's something new there for you to look at? But kind of note for me, for example, I was not aware of the January public works meeting that you had until, Dr. Shaver, you mentioned it to me. So if we can have some kind of a notification of that, I've had a number of calls from people saying they think the board's trying to speak something through to. And, and, and one of them was the meeting you had, I think it was the April meeting where you talked about the, the, the funding mechanisms for the North Elementary. That meeting was posted in a paper, it was posted on your website, and in fact, I had a letter in the paper saying, telling people, come to it, but there were people still felt you were trying to speak something through. So if you have a mechanism for those of us that are interested, we could put our email on a list, so when you post something to that Board Docs website, we get a notice. I think that would help at least alleviate some of the concern. Second thing, the, the policy is that you allow the community input at the end of the meeting such as this. I would find it helpful if you would allow for some community input at the beginning of the meeting, if, if anyone wants to input on an agenda item, because where it is now, it at least gives the appearance that you really don't value what the community has to say, because we don't, we're only allowed to input after the decisions are made. So I would ask you to consider maybe allowing to the community input at the beginning of the meeting if anyone wants to comment on a particular agenda item. But I thought the timely, the discussion on the Board Doc was really timely, could have fit in precisely with what, you know, one of the things that I wanted to, wanted to bring your attention. My opinion, the video wouldn't do anything for me, but, but having the audio and getting it out timely and linking it to the agenda items, I think would be really valuable. So I would appreciate if you consent to that. Thank you.
Do we have any more? Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Mr. President? Yes, your honor. Stephen Short, same address is on.
Yeah, there it is. 113 Parkview.
Another thing between, I know, like everybody says, there's a little bit of animosity between people outside of the board and on the board. I know y'all have a lot of information in front of y'all that we don't understand that y'all already have, like with the, the police department. Y'all stated that it was approximately, I think we get a grant pays $80,000, the city pays the rest of that. I know y'all probably discussed what the initial cost would be, but today it looks like you're passing something and nobody actually asked what is that cost going to be? Because if you don't make every single meeting, you may not get that number. The mills, I know that you're saying we're increasing that because, you know, trying to make USDA happy, kind of. But have we looked into what, what the average price per mill is versus what we're actually charging students? You know, if we're making money already, why are we raising it just to make USDA happy if we don't necessarily have to? And I think it's, it's things like that, like the cameras. I'm sure y'all have seen the budget on whatever the cameras are that you're going to get, but it looks as if y'all just passed that we're going to get cameras, when Ms. Comber discussed like the analytics. What if we do spend all this money on cameras and we don't, we could post this video and five people watch it, and maybe y'all watch it for the next meeting or catch it from what happened? So I know y'all have a lot of that information, but those get passed, and even if I'm watching this video around here, I don't know what information y'all have, or if you're just passing things and nobody even asks how much are the cameras? That may be something that needs to be worked.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing announcements from the, the board. Any? Okay, I have a quick item. If Mr. Kessinger's on the line, don't need to say anything. I was called by a former school board member, Doug Siss, the other day. This is just an item for us to look into. He was saying that when he was on the school board, they had exercised a right, a first right refusal for part of the Miles property across the street. I was not aware of that, and we, I know we've not talked about that in the years that we served on the board. Now, he was done with the board in 2001 and couldn't tell me what year they, they had done that. It was also told that it was recorded. So perhaps Mr. Kessinger could look up to see if that was recorded and to identify whether or not the school corporation has a first right of refusal on a part of that land. I think it's the most eastern part, because the reason why they took a first, an option on the property was to have a potential, they didn't want to do it at that time, they didn't have the money at the time, we might have the money now, but the idea was by that board at that time, is to have an ability to take school buses from our campus here for South Elementary and Middle School, high school is, to North Elementary, and head out on the highway and doing things like that. Don't know if that's something that we even have a concern about, but I do want to know if indeed we have an option on, on land, just even if it's just for us to know what our options are. So anyway, if we could look into that, that would be great, and that's kind of all I know. So good luck, Terry. And I know that this was done with Bob Wood when he was the, the council for the school board. So might be a while of goose chase, but I, I do think that we need to identify what happened. Anything else? Okay, I have a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Elliott, the second, Dr. Bailey. All right, all those in favor, signify by just saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same side motion carries.